Good morning, everyone. We'll call the October 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. Ask you to please rise and we'll ask Councilmember Charles Rong to lead the center implication. Pledge.
Pray with me, please. Oh, how great is our God, and we give thanks to Him for our many blessings each and every day. I give thanks for each and every employee of this city as they work hard to make it a better place for us to live. As we come before Him today, it's my prayer that the actions of this body will be pleasing, not only to Him, but beneficial to our community. It's these things that I pray to our Father, in the name of His Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm free to roll call. Anita, I think you can show all council members present. And if we need to keep our prayers, the family of Councilman Pepper Bray and lost his sister this morning, so let's keep the entire family in our prayers, if you would. Item four is approval of minutes in September 4th, 2018 meeting. There being no changes in modifications, will no objection, will accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation to public comment. Let me indicate to the audience if anyone present who would like to be heard on any item on their new business, if you'll let it be known at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and let you address the council. We have two proclamations this morning. One is proclamation for Annual Night Out of Lieutenant Byron Taylor and proclamation for RAP, and I think we will end up doing the Annual National Night Out first, so Byron, if you'll come up. This is an annual event that we have in our city, always very successful, and Lieutenant Byron Taylor has done it for a number of years, and we appreciate his efforts. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on October 2nd, 2018 entitled National Night Out. Whereas the National Night Out event provides an opportunity for neighbors in Jackson to join over 38 million people in 16,000 communities from all 50 states, Canada, and military bases worldwide. And whereas the National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnership and neighborhood camaraderie to make the neighborhoods safer places to live. And whereas neighbors in the City of Jackson assist the Jackson Police Department through joint community efforts and support, National Night Out 2018 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the City of Jackson be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in the City of Jackson. Now therefore, I'm here to give mayor of the City of Jackson, hereby proclaim Tuesday, 2nd, 2018 as the 35th anniversary of National Night Out and urge all of our citizens to join in supporting this worthwhile event. Lieutenant Taylor? Thank you for your efforts and thank you for being there.
I would like to thank the mayor, the council, the chief for allowing us to participate in this program, but I also urge the citizens and public service to go out and visit the parties because the neighbors that put this on put forth a great effort to do this, so we need to show our appreciation to them. And we also have another event today. It is National Coffee with a Cop Day, and we're in conjunction with AARP at Starbucks on North Highland. Come out and drink some coffee and meet with some of the officers. Thank you for allowing me to participate.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add that we want to thank the Jackson Housing Authority for participating in the National Night Out for the first time in many years. The new executive director, Mark Reeves, has made sure that they're going to be celebrating with their members of the Housing Authority, and we have several coming out tonight for the first time in many years. The torchbearers have passed away, and Mark Reeves has ignited it again, and we're so thankful for that. And we also would like to add Lincoln Street to the list for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. You all get out and participate in National Night Out. Any members of RAP organization here, if you would come on up? We have several of you all here. Get your y'all. It's a proclamation, whereas in 2018, an average of 28.2% or 21,934 of men, 71% of 55,208 of women in Tennessee experienced domestic violence, and one in every four women will experience domestic abuse during her lifetime. And whereas we have 15.5 million U.S. children living in families which partner violence occurred at least once in the past year, and of the domestic violence victims in Tennessee in 2017, children accounted for 7,550 or 9.8%. And whereas almost one out of five murder victims in the U.S. were killed by an intimate partner, Tennessee reported 81 victims killed by an intimate partner in 2018. And whereas the abuse of a family member can have a long-term damaging effect on survivors and their children that impacts family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas families are indispensable to a stable society and should be a place of support to instill responsibility and values in the next generation. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole, but particularly to women and children. And whereas violence against women and children is a prevalent societal ill due to historical imbalance of power and gender and age. Whereas the problem with domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas the survivors of domestic violence should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abusers should be held fully accountable for their crimes against person and the community. And whereas our community has a civic and moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, to address its brutal and destructive effects, and to make ending domestic violence a community priority. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work being done by our community to prevent domestic violence, support survivors of domestic violence, and hold perpetrators of such violence accountable for their crimes against the community, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all of our citizens to come aware of this destructive force in our society and become part of the efforts to stop violence in families. Charles, you want me to present this to you, and thank you for everything you all do?
And I'd like to invite Deborah Brackens, our senior advocate for Jackson-Madison County.
First of all, I'd like to say good morning. Thank you, Mayor Gist. On behalf of the Jackson-Madison advocacy team, I would like to thank you, Mayor Harris, and the esteemed council members and the members of our community for your unwavering support of RAP's mission to end violence, change lives, and give hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, under recognition, let me recognize Councilmember Ernest Brooks II to do the Right Thing Challenge program. We see people have worked awfully hard over the past months, and we appreciate our councilmen heading that up and being a part of it. So Councilman Brooks.
Good morning, Mayor and council. We all know the challenge we face as a community relative to youth violence. Today, we're here to recognize the participants in the 2018 Do the Right Thing Challenge. This year, over 500 students accepted the challenge and submitted writings to express how violence impacts their lives. From those submitted, 10 boys and 10 girls were selected as school ambassadors representing Northeast Middle School, North Parkway, Rose Hill Middle School, and Pope Elementary School. I would like those students to stand and be recognized. The challenge gives students, thank you, young people, the challenge gives students an opportunity to examine the impact of youth violence on their lives in classroom discussions and in written form by communicating what they think should be done to change our culture of violence. By encouraging students to make personal commitments to do something about the problem, the program ultimately seeks to empower them to break the cycles of violence in their homes, schools, and neighborhoods. During the 12 years of the program, over 8,000 students from the Jackson-Madison County school system have accepted the challenge and submitted writings. Teachers and administrators have noticed a reduction in the number and intensity of youth violence in school. I would like to thank Mayor Jerry Gist and the entire city council, and Chief Julian Weiser for their recognition of the epidemic of youth violence and their continued support of the challenge as a remedy. On May 12th of this year, 20 school ambassadors, parents, teachers, and administrators attended the Do the Right Thing Challenge Recognition and Awards Breakfast at the Doubletree Hotel. The school ambassadors received trophies and other gifts, and also the girl and boy who submitted the most responsive writings, Leila Houston and Benjamin Pledge, were announced as the national ambassadors representing Jackson, Tennessee. Those students, a parent of each and their teacher, attended the Do the Right Thing Challenge National Recognition Week in July in Washington, D.C., all expenses paid. During the National Recognition Week, the ambassadors presented their views on youth violence to such national leaders as the Secretary of Education, the Attorney General of the United States Office, the Administrator of the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency, and members of Congress. They toured the U.S. Supreme Court, and their writings were published and placed in the Library of Congress, so as very young people, they are published authors. Following a brief video, we will hear from our national ambassadors, Leila Houston and Benjamin Pledge. And if we could have the IT people with Marcus, he could come forward and help us with that.
Whether cities be large or small, you know, they all have their own unique issues and their problems, and one is, of course, our young people, the middle schoolers, in my opinion, are the most vulnerable. Now, if you can get to the middle schoolers, then you create a good environment for these dumb people. We've had over 5,000 students come through this program with them to do the right thing. Those are about 5,000 kids that we don't have to worry about in our city. Councilman Brooks really birthed the program in our city and been very passionate about it.
Mayor, as you know, we have a big weekend planned for our young people. This year, we had over 300 to write essays, and as you know as well, the Jackson generals are huge supporters, so every child who's written an essay is invited to come out. They get two free tickets for them and their parents.
Jackson City Councilman Ernest Brooks, and he's also the chairman of the Do the Right Thing Challenge, and he's here to try to draw out another first picture.
Being part of something bigger than myself is what makes this program very special. Programs like Do the Right Thing that actually make a difference are very, very important to me. I have actual hands-on experiences with my students and the administrators and the teachers, who I consider are the backbone of the program. We couldn't do it without the teachers.
Right now in Jackson, we are experiencing a lot of problems with gangs and drugs, because when they're selling the drugs, they're trying to get the younger children to sell the drugs for them, because if they get caught, they're not going to serve any hard time. And as far as the Do the Right Thing program itself, I think it's a marvelous program because it is trying to teach students the right way to do, to live, to conduct themselves. It's also cathartic for children, because if they've gone through things in their life, violence, or if it's touched some member of their family, then they're able to put that to paper, they're able to share that in a way that they may not have been able to talk about it or share it in the past. One of the young ladies here, two years ago, wrote about the situation that happened at Union, when a young lady was killed on Union's campus. And she knew some people that knew this young lady, and she talked about how it made her feel personally, how it made her feel unsafe in her own community when she'd never felt that way before. And when you wrote about the young woman at Union who was murdered, why did you feel that you needed to make that a part of it, and what connection did you have to that incident?
A lot of people from my church knew her, and they came into church that Sunday just crying, and usually church is just like a happy place, you know? And they came in, and I just saw how impacted they were by just this pointless violence. As I began writing it, I realized statistics on kids being bullied and how that affects them later on in life, and just I saw how many people were being affected by violence, and it just really opened my eyes writing this essay, seeing just how bad of a problem it is. When I wrote my essay, and then when I went to D.C., and I heard other people's stories of people who had been bullied and had taken part in youth violence, it made me just, you know, want to do something about that, so I think that really carried over into this program that we started in my high school.
I watched from my window as a young man in a blue bandana was surrounded by a troop of men in red bandanas. I caught parts of the confrontation. Betrayal, no loyalty, you're going down tonight. A couple of hours later, I heard aloud, "Pow, pow, pow." I cringed. One of my cousins, Hamid, was actually a victim of gun violence, and it was very unexpected, very tragic for the entire family. My experience with Do the Right Thing, writing the essay, and especially the trip to Washington, D.C., was definitely a catalyst for my passion for community service, paying it forward, youth mentoring. As a youth, I never felt as though my voice was being heard and that my solutions could ever have an impact. I felt so empowered that I organized a community leadership workshop here in Jackson for freshmen in the area to learn some of the same values of paying it forward, service, and leadership.
We have good people here, people that care about their community, that care about the kids here, and that want to see wonderful things happen for Jackson.
This program changes lives. The Do the Right Program changes lives, and we have the results here, and more results to come as your program continues to go on. That's fantastic.
Thank you very much. Before I forget, I would like to recognize my coordinator for the program, Ms. Annette Graves. If we could give her a round of applause, please. Annette was a teacher that went to Washington with us many, many years ago and never left, so we surely, surely thank her, and all the parents who are here with their kids, if they can stand, we'd appreciate that as well. Okay, and very quickly, if Benjamin and Leila could come forward to the podium.
Youth violence. Youth violence is abominable in America. Violence gave a new adjustment to a population of people, personalities. There are uncounting reasons why it causes youth violence. What can I do to prevent harm, to influence my peers, teachers, and most adults? Although youth violence will still continue, we should still do something about it. Youth violence has actually affected my life and my family. At a very young age, I witnessed youth violence even in my own household. I have been through something that no one should ever go through. Sometimes I imagine what it would be like if that past didn't happen, what life I could have had. After everything, my whole family went into a great depression. There were times when I couldn't, couldn't feel it.
Let's give her a round of applause. As you see, these young people are writing about things that are very personal, and very familial, and they're very difficult sometimes. We truly appreciate that, Leila, Benjamin.
So I'm just going to talk about my experience in Washington today. I just really enjoyed my week in July in Washington, because I got to meet kids from all around the country, and I got to hear their stories and their experiences with youth violence, and just realized that other kids go through the same stuff that I do on an everyday basis. Some of the stuff we got to do, we got to go to the Supreme Court and the Library of Congress and just kind of toured around there and saw how things worked, and that was just like a really cool experience, you know? There's not a lot of people get to do that. And I got to talk to Congressman Kustoff and told him about my experience in Washington that week, and our two senators too, I got to meet them and talk with them about my experience in Washington so far. And I just really, really enjoyed it, and it's a really great program that they have here, and I feel like all students should do it, write about their experiences.
Thank you, Benjamin. We'd like to make a presentation to Mayor Gist, who has supported the program over the years, and again, his recognition of the impact of youth violence and the importance of this program. Mayor Gist, we have a signed local book and a signed national book for you, by our two national ambassadors, and their picture with our two senators, Mark and Alton Fox, for your office.
Thank you all so much. Councilman, thank you for your work with this particular group, very proud of them. I know they had a good time in Washington, what an experience for them to attend the nation's capital on this particular program, so thank you all so much. Thank you, parents, for working with Councilman Brooks and the city to promote these young people to where they can be the very best they can be, so thank you very much.
Mayor, I know many of our students have to get back to class, so we'll, this class is dismissed.
Thank all of you for being here, and have a good day. Before I call up Dr. Lake and Frank McMain for Task Force, Animal Adoption Center, let me just recognize Tony Black and ask him to come up for just a second and relay to you what kind of weekend we had here in Jackson, Tennessee, somewhere between 7,000 and 10,000 people downtown Jackson, Tennessee. So Tony?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just want to publicly say that the mayor, several months back, asked the Recreation and Parks Department to become involved in the Downtown Jackson International Food and Arts Festival, and we have been working with that group several months and planning it, and I just want to publicly thank all of the city employees that were involved, but more importantly, my department, the Recreation and Parks Department, our maintenance department, our groundskeeping department, and Sandy McDermott's staff, our staff in programming, and it was, by all accounts, from all of the comments, it was the best one that was ever put on. It was more organized, and that is what our goal was, is to get it more organized, and that each year they are not inventing the wheel again, so hopefully next year would be better. From what I understand, it was close to about 10,000 people that came out. So I want to thank this community, and again, thank the mayor and the council for this support, and the next event, December 3rd, Christmas Parade, so be prepared for that. But again, I just wanted to publicly thank all of the employees with the city and my employees in my department. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Dave, we're still hearing accolades towards this weekend and everything that took place, how well it was organized and the parade and all aspects of it. I'm sure there's some good smells downtown with all the food being served, so we appreciate everyone who played a part in that, especially our co-chair, Dr. Sandra Day and Eduardo Morales, a big, huge part in this particular festival. And I want to thank our vice mayor for standing in the gap this weekend. The entire success stands with her. She did a great job, and we appreciate you standing in. Councilman, a foot. Okay, let me call on now, as far as recognition, Dr. Vicky Lake and Frank McMain from West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation, representing several folks that are here and representing a committee and a task force really that's been working on this issue for months and months. They have put a great deal of effort and time into this particular project that we're so looking forward to getting started soon. So, Vicky?
Okay, thank you, council. Thank you, mayor, for allowing Frank and I to come. We have been working as a task force on the Jackson Animal Care Center for some months. We had on our committee several of the rescues represented. We have input from local vets. We had Harry Henry and Kathleen Honeycutt with the city, and we have, I guess, Chris Rice here from Crocker Construction, who's been working with us on the design. When we first came together, it was prior to the city taking responsibility for the Animal Care Center, and our main task then was to write job descriptions, policies, and procedures, so that when the City of Jackson took responsibility for the Animal Care Center, we will be ready to go. Since that time, we have been working on the design of a new building, and I hope all of you, did you bring your, I handed out the floor plans. What we are here today is, we are requesting $1.3 million to build, out of the capital fund, to build a new Jackson Animal Care Center that will include a quarantine portion and a adoption center. The quarantine portion will not be open to the public, that will be the portion where animals come in or are vetted and are there for a couple of weeks, get their shots, make sure they're healthy, before they move to the public side where they then are put up for adoption. Now, we have been working with the rescues in the community and have come to some agreements that they will be able to pull animals out of the quarantine building for their, for purposes of their adoption, so hopefully this will increase the flow of the animals through the center and keep the flow going so that we can keep them getting adopted. We are requesting funding for a $10,750 square foot building. It includes, like I say, both quarantine and the adoption center. On the quarantine side, there will be a holding and isolation for 11 dogs and cats. There will be a tub, special food prep. There will be 46 kennels that are three feet, four feet, and five feet in size, depending upon the size of the animals. This quarantine area is completely This quarantine area is completely separate from the adoption center. The walls go all the way to the ceiling. There's no, they will have separate HVAC, drainage, and airflow than the adoption center. On the adoption center side, there are several play areas where individuals and families who are interested in adopting an animal can come in and play with them, special rooms for cats and dogs. There's a separate tub and grooming area on this side, separate food prep. There are seven kennels specifically for puppies as we get lots of puppies in. And then there are 40 kennels at different sizes for dogs and areas for cats. And we are requesting this. We have studied this. We have floor plans that you have in front of you. And we urge your consideration of this. And then I want Frank to talk a little bit about the impact on the community and then any questions you may have.
By the way, I want to thank you. Isn't Vicki amazing, so many things that she undertakes that has a positive impact on our community? And I want to thank you for your service to our community. A lot of people need to step up to serve and we're grateful that you did. I want to talk about the quality of life issues. And leadership in a city is vital for its success. I look back in comparing my hometown with Jackson. In the 70s, our cities were the same size. We were the same distance from a major city, that being Nashville, and ours is Memphis. We had an interstate, very comparable. Something happened in Jackson, Tennessee, in the 70s that began to show that it was a different type of city, one with more leadership. We built a civic center that would hold 2,500 people, almost a tenth of our city at that time. We built Omen Arena that would hold a fifth of our city with 5,000 people or more. We were a city of 35,000 people and we had our own symphony. We had our own television station. Now we have three. Every major network is in our city. Something happened in Jackson, Tennessee that made it very different to where Jackson is a much larger city, much innovative, more innovative city. And it took something about community leadership and vision. Jackson has long been a supporter of renovation of Midtown Jackson. Look what we've done for our downtown city. When I look at my hometown, we have the civic center, Omen Arena, and my hometown still does not have a facility that will hold more than 500 people outside of a church. Our city is different. We're doing things that are impacting generations to come with Midtown and Downtown and young families. But the other day, or excuse me, about three weeks ago, I woke up on a Saturday morning, went outside to my yard with my two dogs, and encountered a huge dog that had been roaming the neighborhood, struck and died at my, right at my back door. A block away, we have a lady that started with, I believe, a cat starter kit. She had 15 at one point. Now she has populated my backyard, my neighbor's backyard, and several other backyards with her little small-sized 15 cat starter kit. The foundation has started a spay and neutering program that is low income, that is provided at little or no cost to anyone in our community. So what are we asking you to do? We're asking you to help put Jackson in a place where people want to come and see our city. A couple of years ago, as we were looking at this project, we drove to Franklin, Tennessee because they, we thought, had the leading program for the care of animals in their community. Well, we would like to become that place where people come to see. How do we take care of our city, the quality of life of our city? We do that with, we have the lift center, one of the best. We have a hospital system that is amazing. We have a wonderful place to live, wonderful downtown. The one thing that we need is a program that allows us to be very pro adoptive, adoptive, and to enhance a spay and neutering program that we want to do, through private donations, so that cities come and see how a progressive city handles cats and dogs and other animals. This is a quality of life issue, and this is a quality of life issue that separates some cities for others, as Jackson has always done. So we would like to ask you to fund this wonderful project.
Just for council's information, we have the funding for this, you'll find in your budget amendments, which will be kind of near the end of the agenda. That money is set aside for well over a year to go in this direction, awaiting the final results from our task force. So I think they have finished their work, is ready to move forward. We are in an existing building which the Humane Society had purchased a number of years ago, and we have had that building appraised, and it has appraised for roughly $325,000. So from the $1.3 million that will be in the budget amendment, that, once the building is sold, obviously, we can't sell it until we're out of it. But once it's sold, that $300,000 hopefully, will go back into capital fund balance to... So really, I guess the bottom line would be right around a million dollars, maybe 990,000 that we'd need to construct the quarantine center and the animal adoption center. So if any questions, council may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just have some points of interest. Dr. Lake, good morning.
Good morning.
You know, about six, eight months ago, I mentioned to have that community meeting with the subdivision over there. Has that happened?
No, we have also moved the building so it doesn't sit right on the back of that neighborhood. But once, if this is approved, we will have that meeting. But we didn't want to be premature.
Okay. Second observation, Ms. McMain, good morning.
Good morning.
We love downtown, but we're trying to do some things in East Jackson to develop it with CRA too.
Right.
With business development and housing development. We love downtown, but we need to stretch it for the entire city. But now, let me ask this question three. With respect to what we've been talking about and discussing about a ballpark concerning animal park or something?
The dog.
Does this correlate?
The Animal Care Center was a part of that grant application when we submitted it. They did, they were there when the check was presented. They had a huge presence. It will be very close. We can have adoption events there. We do plan to partner, once the park is done, to have adoption events. But the dog park, the new dog park, is funded by the Boyd Foundation. And that is kind of a separate funding than this. But the Animal Care Center was a part of that grant application.
Do you still see it correlating?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, first, Mayor, thank you for correcting the record relative to the funding that has been set aside. I guess my first question is, how much was set aside when we did that?
Pretty close to the amount that the building will cost, roughly at 1.6. I think we're at, our fund balance now is nearing $4 million, as far as our capital. So we still have some access to use if we get an emergency and if things go a little above the projected cost. But it has been set aside for well over a year. Y'all been working how long on this?
About 18 months because we started prior to October of 17.
And obviously, we didn't, you know, there's no need to spend any of that funding until they complete their work.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, Ms. Lake, relative to grant applications, how would that work going forward?
Well, we hope, we got a small grant last year to initiate this spay and neuter program. We believe that is a very important part of this whole process. And we did get a small grant and use those funds, and then we found some additional funds to continue this spay and neuter program through the foundation. We plan to apply for additional grants. There are PetSmart and Petco grants that we can apply for, that we can apply for once we get this facility. And I know that there are grants to get the food donated. And so there's various amounts of grants, but most of those will be for operations, not for construction.
Okay. And that was kind of leading into my second question. Your request is only to build the structure, correct?
Yes, sir. The way we have it, the foundation signed an agreement with the city of Jackson in October of 17.
West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation?
The West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation. We are responsible for raising the money to pay for the supplies and the vet care of the animals. And we have been paying the monthly invoices from the city to pay for the vet care and the supplies.
And going forward, relative to employees and benefits, where would that come from?
Those are city, those are city, the employees and the utilities and the maintenance of the building are the city responsibility. The vet care and the supplies are the responsibility of the West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation to raise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Vicki, thank you so much for all your work on this.
Oh, thank you.
When we first began to talk about this, it was going to be two separate buildings. Now it's going to be incorporated into one. And I feel very good about what you've explained to me, how separate the sick animals are going to be. We know approximately how much money this saves the city by going to the one building.
It saves on the, not only on the construction, but it will also save on the operations and the anticipated two people, two staff people. They will not have to hire additional two people.
It will probably save on utilities.
Yes, because it will be one building and...
It will be quite a savings.
The economies of scale will be so much better in the one building.
Any other questions, council?
On the spay and neuter program, you're saying that any animal that goes through processes in the building here will be spayed and neutered?
Yes, sir.
Are we still considering the possibility of some kind of spay and neuter requirement for the city or is that on that burner?
Would council like me to bring that before then? I think this comes up every time I come.
Right now, some of the back burner would be a safe place for it, yes.
If council wants that to be brought before it...
Would that be something that the Healthcare Foundation or the animal part of it would be women to look into again?
Sure, we would love for you to...
The nice thing would be if we could raise the money to have a program that's funded so that either a low cost or a free spay and neutering program kind of gets the animals under control in number size.
And it makes it a less obtrusive to people if they have it on.
That's why I was saying, is to look into it a little bit more because that's what I would like to see, something for low-income people to be able to get it done free and then, you know, maybe reduce costs.
We've even talked about having a mobile unit that goes into a community, a part of our community, that allows that to happen. And at the end of the day, you pick up your animal and you take it back home.
And I can tell you, in the last six weeks, I think we've done over 15 or 18 of these. So it's really taken off here for us, for the foundation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
And we anticipate this will be the final request on this?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, council?
One last quick question. On the cost that y'all are estimating, have y'all got a, where did you come up with the cost amount?
We had, we had Crocker Construction put together the, actually, the details for. So we're very confident in those figures.
May I add that we're closing in on roughly $300,000 in private, in private gifts. Also, one from Waste Management, which was presented here, but we have some individuals and other corporate people that have obligated some private funding for it.
Dr. Lake, is it possible that you could get to the council those figures and that calculation?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
I think that'd be helpful for the record.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions, council? If not, thank you all very much for your hard work. To all the rest of you groups that are here, thank you all for your participation in this over the past 18 months to two years. And hopefully, we'll get to the go-line.
And thank you, council, for allowing Frank and I to serve. It's very meaningful for both of us, so we appreciate it.
Okay, under first readings? We are on first readings, aren't we? Yeah, okay. Item seven on your agenda, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located along 700 block of Old Humboldt Road from the SR-1 Single Family Residential District to RS-1 PRD Single Family Residential Plan Residential Development District comprising 7.57 acres submitted by Ryan Richardson Surveying Services on behalf of Zico Properties LLC.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
Hopefully, our signal will change and you'll have a map, but you have the maps in your packet. This item was presented to the Planning Commissioner at their last meeting and they are recommending approval of it to you. This is an expansion of existing subdivision called Centennial Place. This adds some additional lots to that subdivision. And again, we are recommending approval of it to you because it does continue the residential development that's already present in the area.
So move. We have a motion and a second before we vote. This is an ordinance on first reading. This necessitates a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing now to see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. Hearing none, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and we have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is consideration of the ordinance to rezone property located along the 1188 block of Ashport Road from RS-1 Single Family Residential District to RS-2 Single Family Residential District comprising 20.32 acres submitted by Mickey Evans, Clay Williams, and Associates on behalf of Alyssa Manus Freedom Trust.
Again, this was presented to the Planning Commissioner at their last meeting and they are recommending it to you. This is a new subdivision. The class that they're requesting is RS-2. It's also a single-family class. It just allows a little bit narrower lot, and they needed some relief on a couple of lots that were, or more, that were below 70 feet that the RS-1 requires. So again, these are going to be big lots. They just are going to be narrower, and we are supportive of their request. And again, the Planning Commission did recommend it to you.
So move. Have a motion.
Second.
A second discussion. Let's see, before we vote, we'll have a kind of public hearing on this particular ordinance on first reading. I'll open the public hearing, see if there's anyone here who would like to speak on this matter at all. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And any discussion from council? If not, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item three is consideration of the ordinance to annex, a resolution to adopt the plan of service, and an ordinance to rezone an area referred to as SR-223, generally located on the east side of State Route 223, south of Lower Brownsville Road, comprising 5.48 acres, more or less. Proposed zoning for this annexation area is I-2 Light Industrial District.
This item was presented to the Planning Commission and they are recommending the plan of service to you. They're also recommending the zoning of I-2 to the property once it's annexed into the city. They are also recommending annexation to you. You don't see many annexations anymore because the state legislature has taken away our ability to annex by our own initiative. But in this case, we own the property, so we can still annex our own property. This is an area located next to property that we've already brought into the city that's part of the industrial property that we purchased out in the 223 Lower Brownsville Road, kind of T-dot facility area. Again, you have in your packet a plan of service. We would ask that you approve the resolution for the plan of service. There's a state requirement that we outline the services that are going to be offered to the area and when they're going to be offered. State law also specifies which areas we must address. So you'll see fire and police and street maintenance and zoning and planning and also utility provisions in that, in that plan of service. We'd also ask that you approve the annexation since it is in our best interest that we have the property that will ultimately be industrial developed in the city. Also, that you approve the ordinance to zone, which will affect the zoning of the property once it's annexed, which will be I-2 like the adjacent properties are.
Move to adopt to the ordinance to annex, move to adopt the resolution to adopt a plan of service, and move to adopt the ordinance to zone the area referred to as SR-223.
Okay, the ordinance to annex is on first reading, so we'll have a public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to be heard on this matter?
Second.
If not, we'll... If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion from counsel?
Mr. Chairman, you have another ordinance on there.
This is ordinance to annex.
Okay.
Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
The next is a resolution to adopt a plan of service. There is no public hearing involved there, so is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt?
Motion being made.
We have, okay, we have a motion. Or, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, we have an ordinance to zone an area, same area, that necessitates a public hearing, so if there's anyone here who'd like to be heard on this matter, as far as the zoning, in public hearing, please indicate your preference. If not, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second to rezone. Discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, Stan, did we wade through those three?
You still.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, on second reading, item eight, consideration of ordinance to rezone property located southeast quarter of Bond Street and Holly Street, to I-2, Light Industrial District, B5, Highway Business District, 3.6 acres, submitted by Linda Clammer.
So move.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel.
Thank you, Stan. Okay, under new business, item nine, consideration of resolution authorizing insurance and sale of not exceeding 200 million aggregate principal amount of the hospital revenue bond, Series 2018, Jackson Madison County General Hospital, and authorizing and approving all documents, instruments, actions, and matters necessary or appropriate for or pertaining to the issuance, sale, and delivery of said bonds. We have members here from West Tennessee Healthcare, Jackson General, welcome. Gentlemen?
Thank you.
Mayor and counsel, my name is Will Bell. I'm outside counsel for Jackson General Hospital. Also here is James Ross, the chief executive officer of the hospital, and Kelly Yiwang, the head of capital markets at the hospital. This is a request for the City of Jackson to be the issuing authority for hospital bonds. These are hospital revenue bonds, secured only by the hospital revenue. There is no lien on hospital assets, there's no mortgage on hospital buildings, there's no obligation upon the city, it's not a general obligation bond. City would be acting as an issuing authority. This is similar to what the, what the counsel has done before. This is a refunding of a portion of 2008 bonds that are eligible for redemption at par value. The, the redeemed bonds would allow the hospital to save around $800,000 a year in interest costs. There's another component of the bonds, it's a taxable portion of about $90 million that would reimburse the hospital its cost for the acquisition of the Tenova Hospitals in West Tennessee that has broadened their footprint and enhanced the healthcare opportunities in West Tennessee, and also, I think, in my opinion, is an economic driver to the City of Jackson as well. Yesterday, the mayor received a letter from the comptroller of the treasury approving, of the, of the state of Tennessee approving these bonds, and that should have been, according to those directions, posted on the city's website and copies provided. Previously, I provided a copy of the resolution that we asked the counsel to adopt to the city attorney. He's reviewed it, it's been through the agenda review committee. Also, if, if anyone wants one today, or I can provide a copy for any reason, we have a letter from bond counsel in Chicago indicating that these bonds are only revenue bonds, they are not any obligation of the city. The city act is, acts as the issuing authority. So, we ask that the counsel approve that, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and if I can't, Kelly can, because he's the money man there.
Move to approve. We have a motion to approve. And second, discussion from counsel.
Attorney Bell, I, I would like a copy of that letter, if you could provide it to...
Yes, sir, I brought some right here.
Or, we can, you can get it to our secretary, and she'll get it to him.
All right, sir.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Our second is...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Additional discussion from counsel? Any questions? If not, counsel, please vote. Authorize a resolution.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is the approval of resolution for presentation of charter amendments to the state senate, House of Representatives for approval. Mr. Cobb, you want to try to handle that for us? Today is Mr. Cobb's 38th birthday, just for the, just for the information for counsel and audience.
At least 38.
All of 38.
This is a...
Can you corroborate this?
I, I admit to 38, maybe 39. The content of what this resolution discussed has, has already been passed by this group. They have asked us to adopt a resolution of transmittal of what we've already passed to get to the state. Used to, we would just call them or deliver it, but we wanted a formal resolution, so we're not doing anything new. We're just basically putting the items that we've already passed into a box, and y'all are authorizing me to pack the box.
The timeline for getting that, the general assembly kind of ran out on us last year when we approved, when we approved those charter amendments. As you all remember, the general assembly was tinkering with making all elections on the same date, the same year, and we didn't want to get in the way of that, because some of our charter, the amendments reflected those elections, so we delayed getting it there, so we want to go ahead and get it into the general assembly, where they can get it done their docket for this year. Any, any questions, counsel? Is there a motion? We need to approve the...
I think so, yes, sir.
Submittal of the, to the general assembly.
Yeah, just approve the resolution to authorize by the recorder and OIA to present it to our representatives.
Okay.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, item three is consideration request, transfer of two vacant lots, 317 and 321 Hale Street, the City of Jackson, to habitat for purpose of building two homes.
So move.
So, a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you. Item four is consideration of contract for ready-mixed concrete, and I think Ms. Connie will present that. If, any, any questions from counsel for that? I think y'all have a copy of that.
Good morning.
Is there a, is there a motion for award that contract?
So move.
Have a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah, one quick question, Mayor.
Is the, the price on this similar to what we've been paying in the past? Is the price on this similar to what we've been paying in the past?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, item five is consideration of contract for hauling purposes to carry debris to landfill when city trucks are not available. We have a contract ready for counsel to approve. If there's a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, item six is a contract with TML for liability and property insurance. Any questions on that? No? Stacy, I don't know if Stacy's here or not.
So move.
Yeah, she's here. We have a motion and a sec, have a second?
Second.
We have a second discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, item seven is Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development Site Development Grant, total budget of 500,000, 70/30 match grant, that is for our industrial site. We have Mandy and Ryan here and other folks in the chamber. If y'all would like to ask Mandy any questions about that particular grant, trying to get our site somewhat ready for a new industrial partner with the city.
Yes. Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
I'm here, several months ago, you guys approved a grant, a 50/50 match through TBA. You approved for me to apply for that grant, and we were successful in doing so. If you recall, that grant was up to $500,000 with a match of $250,000 if we were successful. Well, we were. And, we have an opportunity to apply for another grant with the Department of Economic and Community Development for the same project, for the same items, and we would be able to use part of that match as our local match for the TBA grant. So, I know the, the accounting department can probably explain bet, better how much we will save, but what it means in short is that we will not have to give the full $250,000 match for the TBA grant if we're successful with this one. So, it helps us.
How much will we have to give?
This one... This one requires a 30% match. Let me look at my notes.
And of the 30% match, part of that can be matched by the previous grant. It will account for that. So, it will be 30% of the 500,000. But, then again, the other one was 250, so we'll be able to apply a portion of that to the match.
Each of them will allow a certain amount of the other to account for our local match, so we will not exceed the 250,000. In fact, it will save us significant money, if we're successful. So, I'm asking for permission to apply for that second grant.
I see.
Okay, any other, any other questions, counsel? Do we have a motion?
No.
We don't? Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Discussion from counsel?
One, one question. So, you got to ask permission to try to save the city some money?
I think any grant that requires a local match, I need to get permission from you guys. But, yes, that's why I'm here, to ask for your permission to save me money.
I think we'll probably grant it to you.
They're real good, though, when it gets to getting somebody else's money.
That's right.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
The vote is unanimous?
Thank you, Ms. Mandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anita, did we vote on item six?
Yes.
We did. Okay. Thank you very much. Item eight is the Edward Byrne Jag Grant, FY18.
So move.
We got a motion to approval. A second?
Second.
A second discussion, counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Okay, item nine is Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant, 50,000 for overtime and benefits for PD. Is there a motion?
So move.
A motion, second discussion. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
We have two appointees for board, to Jackson-Minesboro Regional Planning Commission. We have two, reappointment of Patricia Ross and reappointment of Chris Edwards. We have a motion for approval, a second?
Second.
Discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the, and the vote is unanimous?
Okay, on the budget amendments, Ms. Karen?
Three budget amendments this month. The first one is to the capital fund for the Jackson Ballpark capital, in the amount of $44,251. This is for additional capital funds that was, for some additions of party decks added to the park, in the amount of $44,251. This will bring the draw on fund balance to 2,000,276,969.34.
Okay, is there a motion, motion for approval on that budget amendment?
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
A second, second discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the motion?